Hello, everyone. Thanks for coming out. We'll start the meeting officially at 5 o'clock, so we have two minutes. We have to start at 5:00. We can't start early. But let's go around, for those that weren't here, or for those that were here and kind of forgot who we all are, we're going to go around, do introductions. We'll start with, we'll start at the end.
Can't hear us in the hallway.
Is this any better? We're just starting introductions for those that couldn't hear.
I am Seth Peterson with Boltonham, Inc., City's Consultant Engineer.
Dave Hume with LRE Water, Mayor Consulting Hydrogeologist, representing the city.
Lynda Urock, Deputy Clerk for the city.
Bryce Schenke, Councilmember.
Kate Timmerman, Councilmember.
Josh Berg, Councilmember.
Amanda Novak, Councilmember.
Joe Julius, Mayor.
Tom Terry, City Administrator.
Jake Skleszaczek, Planner.
Andrea Payler, City Attorney.
Renee Christensen, City Planner.
Rich Revering, City Engineer.
Brady Jewell, Chief of Police.
Mike Larson with Boltonham, Consulting Traffic Engineer.
Tony.
I'm going to put him on the spot.
Tony Winckie, Scott County.
All right, we're going to call it 5:00, and we're just going to open, go ahead and open the meeting. Everyone, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
...to the body of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any changes to the agenda?
No. Does the mayor want me to review the meeting protocols for the hybrid meeting?
Yeah, please. Thank you.
This city council meeting is being conducted in a hybrid meeting format. This format allows the public to view and participate in the meeting through Zoom in addition to being able to attend the meeting in person. As a result, in order to conduct the meeting in an orderly manner, certain protocols are to be followed. The host will keep all participants in Zoom muted until public comment is requested or the public hearing is opened. The city council will first solicit comment from those attending the meeting in person. At the appropriate time, the mayor or host will specifically solicit public comment from the Zoom participants. Comments will be solicited from those participating via PC or phone application, and then from those participating by calling in. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand virtually. The mayor or host will individually recognize those wishing to speak and will invite you to speak. The host will unmute your microphone. Your microphone will be remuted after you have spoken. If you wish to raise your hand virtually, if you are on phone or participating on a PC or Mac application, if you go to the menu on the bottom and push the reactions button, it will raise a small menu. On that menu, you simply need to click on the Raise the Hand button. You can do the same thing again to lower your hand. That will allow us to know that you wish to speak and be able to call on you. If you are participating by phone, press *9 on your phone to raise your hand. The mayor or host will call on individual telephone numbers and ask you to address the council.
Okay. Any changes to the agenda?
No, Mr. Mayor. I will point out to the audience and to the council, this is a continuation of the hearing. The only item that is on the agenda tonight is continuation of the hearing, and as such, that is the only business that the city council can conduct tonight.
Motion.
Motion to approve agenda.
Second.
Motion by Kate, second by Amanda. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, agenda is adopted. So with that, well, before opening the public hearing, just a quick recap of just some of the ground rules from last public hearing, from Thursday night. First, we want to hear from everyone. Everyone that cares to approach the podium and speak, or cares to speak online, we want to hear from you. That said, we do want to keep the meeting going, and there's a number of folks that had an opportunity to speak last week. I'm asking only people come speak who did not get an opportunity to speak last week. We tried to try to keep the time limit for each comment to two minutes. That didn't work. And really, we don't want to be too heavy-handed. If we start pushing five minutes, though, on comments, I am going to unfortunately have to ask you to stop and move on to the next speaker. So with that, it's 5:03. We'll open the public hearing. Who would like to come first? Please step up to the podium, give your name and address for the record.
My name is Brandon Prasnicki, 4875 East 250th Street, former council member and city advocate. I'm going to try to keep this as short as possible. I have three quick questions, and then the answers can come after. I have a little bit of warm fuzzies for everybody in the room, and one suggestion. So first question is, neighboring wells in the line of good community governing, can we give direction to staff to aid in investigation of neighboring well issues that are potentially post the spike in increased pumping? And/or, if that's not possible, give visibility to the area residents when any stress tests are happening, so they can make sure that they have water pressure, et cetera? Number two, my well. Based on the information I'm hearing, my concerns have gone down and diminished quite a bit. Likely, I'll be immune to this, as my well is not in this aquifer. And the explanation of the different layers of aquifers and stuff is very interesting to me. I don't know how that's possible, how it doesn't seep or whatever, but I believe you guys. I bought this home like four years ago. I don't actually know how deep my well is, or what aquifer I'm in. So, quick question, and you can follow up later. I think you guys have my email address. Where's the best place to get that information? I'm sure it's available at the DNR county or something. I don't actually know where to go get it. There's a lot of comments from the conservationists in the area as far as moving water out of the area. I guess I see that point in moving water out of the area, and being the area being the aquifer, I guess, is what you could, I think, what the main concerns are. Is that level of concern something that can be regulated by city policy? And even if that is possible, is that typical? Or is that more of a state issue? Is that something people should talk to their legislators and stuff? And can you maybe assist in what that avenue might be? That's the three questions. Here comes the warm fuzzies. So, in general, I want to thank staff and the council for the hard work you're doing in this matter, and I'm very excited for the prospect of future growth in the city. I think people are always pick apart growth for a variety of reasons. You know, not in my backyard argument. Industrial isn't as nice as commercial. The traffic, the lights, et cetera. In general, any industrial is going to be a high level of services and roads and noise, et cetera. But I think in general, people need to understand is that no matter what business comes, someone will always pick apart that business, as it adds stress to these variables. When change comes, people's first response is always to find the negative. And I think there are a lot of positives here. And it is a great stepping stone to spur growth and other things that people talk about wanting in the community. Spreading the tax base and user base on the utility funds are all positives. As you guys remember, on my time on the council, I gave staff a really hard time for water rates due to the treatment plant, and was frustrated that all that pricing burden was put on the residents. I do think, here comes the suggestion part. I do think we should give direction to the economic development, that other high-water users may not be a good fit after this is in place. And I would also consider voting down the connection fee waiver. As there is a concern of diversity of water, I think Rich actually pointed this out, very unlikely scenario that they close shop a year from now, but that would be a lock of diversity water issue. And projects are being moved forward, that I think, moving those project, water projects forward. The connection fees would go a long way to build up that infrastructure, and not putting that burden on residential users to handle future growth is something to consider. I get that the return on the investment Tom pointed out is good on the funds in general. The funds would actually be healthier with a larger water user, and it may be seen as a good investment. But one piece of it in that analysis, I think, is missing, or at least I didn't see, is how much better it could possibly look with the water connection fees not removed. And I would make sure that this is considered for analysis, and potential to improve the user water rates.
Thank you. For any of the questions that were answered?
Yeah, I can repeat the questions if I'm okay to go.
Rich, would you be the one to handle that, or?
I think Seth and Dave probably would take most of those.
So, Brandon, could you just start with the first question again, and we'll just knock them down one by one?
The first one is, is it possible to give direction to staff to work with area residents on their wells? That's more of a staff policy question. And will there be visibility on when any stress testing is happening that the users can just double-check that, be home and turn on the faucets, I guess?
So Seth, could you talk about the process of putting new wells in, how surrounding property owners are engaged in that process, and how they're notified, et cetera?
Yep. So, when the city would go through the process of drilling a new well, they have to go to the DNR and get approval for that. As you go through that approval process, and as if they grant for the well, they then usually, with that, there is a pumping test. That pumping test may range from a week to 30 days, and it's a continuous pumping test, so it's not, it's more conservative in nature, because the city's pumps don't run for 24 hours a day. They run for a period of time and shut off. This is stressing it harder than that. And so what happens is that they're looking then wherever that well is, within a vicinity of that, they, we are tracking those additional, those other wells, those private wells in those areas. And so homeowners and well owners would be aware of what's going on. In some of those wells, depending on what the DNR puts together, they even may want us to monitor those. So they're actually having monitoring equipment in those private wells to measure that drawdown, to make sure there's no great impact on those wells. So that's all part of the DNR process.
And do the people get notified of when?
Yes, yep, yep. They draw a radius around that proposed well, and that's where we look at. So, yep, everyone's notified.
The other one is, not to put you on the spot, but if someone could tell me where to go to find out the information about my wells?
County Well Index would be the location, Dave?
County Well Index, which is an online database. We can certainly provide you the link to that.
If one of us?
If you just search County Well Index, Minnesota.
Oh, it's public. I can just search for it?
Just do Minnesota Well Index. And I looked it up. It's 315 feet is your well.
Nice.
Got it. There you go.
I'm on there, so I might as well tell you.
I was saying, because not every well is.
That was way quicker of an answer than I was anticipating.
Yeah, not every well is in there. You know, it's only if it's been, you know, recorded or submitted by the drilling contractor. So that's fantastic. Great job.
Thank you.
Lots of info on there for you.
And then the third question was, moving water out of the aquifer, I think, is a conservationist concern I've heard in the community. Is that something that a city could even write a policy on? Or is that typical? And what's the best avenue for someone to follow up or communicate that concern?
You're speaking specifically to water being transported out of the state?
Bottled and moved. I think that the area is probably of most concern is the aquifer, right where the water originated. Other people might argue what area that is. I just know that there's some discussion about Niagara shipping it to Dakotas. It's generally regional. But like, if they had a concern about moving water out of the aquifer and moving it to a different location, and then not making it its way back home, who's, what's the best?
Andrea, is that something that we can regulate as a city?
Right. That's not something that the city would regulate. That's handled by the state and the DNR. And I think that there is a statute, I think was pointed out by one of the citizens of the city, that you cannot move water outside, you can't take bulk water and transport it out of the state more than 100 miles of a certain amount.
I think some people's concern is that's a little limited, and they're, you know. I'm just asking what the best avenue is.
So in short, that's a statutory item, so the approach would be to approach the legislature related to that.
Who would like to speak next? Please come on up, state your name and address for the record.
David Fram, 25826 Skyline Circle and 1223 Francis. We live on Skyline Circle today, and we are building a house on Francis. On Francis, yeah. The city, I think, has taken a very narrow or short-sighted view in the planning for this project. The area is zoned industrial, but you are putting an industrial area into a residential area. Granted, it's not the city's residential area. It's Newmarket Township. But you have single-family residential on three sides of that industrial development. I think the planning documents should include light screening, both for the security lights and the truck movement, and to limit the light bound, the light to the boundary of Lot 1 on the north and east sides of Lot 1. That's where most of your residential is. Also, it was mentioned they want lights on the top of their 65-foot silos. There was nothing specified about a need for those lights, what they were really for. If they're for security lighting, they should be brought down to no more than the height of the building, where the other parking lot and security lights would be. If they need lights at the top for maintenance, they can turn them on when they're going to use them, and turn them off when they're done. There should be comments or restrictions on the truck movements and idling to minimize truck noise in the residential area, and to minimize air pollution. As you've heard the other night, and again tonight already, Minnesotans have a keen interest in the state's water resources, both surface and subsurface. The Dakota County issue a couple of years ago, I think, highlighted that. The issue of water quality has been the big issue in northern Minnesota with the hard rock mining. Subsurface water should be used first for direct drinking, then other uses, such as ag and other industry. Water for bottling for drinking should be quite a ways down that priority list. If a city's water is of poor quality for drinking, the city should do a better job of treating it. City treating is a lot less resource-intensive than individual treatment or bottling the water. The use permit, I think, should have a tie to the water level of the aquifer. If the aquifer goes down, should be a clause in there that their water permit is suspended. You just talked about the depression around the well when pumping. I also agree that there should be no reduction in water connection fees. There was no need or basis for a reduction in the presentation. Niagara started the process to build the plant knowing what the fees would likely be. Also, the presentation did not show any benefit to the city for reducing the fees. In summary, bottling water for general distribution is a very poor use of our potable water. And there's a lot of things that should be done for mitigation of both light, noise, and air pollution as part of the planning process. Thank you.
Thank you.
We do have a clarification on the lights, if you want to cover some of the questions.
Yeah, some of the items that Dave brought up, staff has been, has information on. So Renee, do you want to talk about the lighting and some of the other items?
The Niagara project would be required to comply with city code regarding lighting, which restricts foot candle meter readings at property lines with adjacent residential properties to a half-foot foot candle meter reading, and at road rightaways to one-foot candle meter reading. We are working with Niagara to look more closely at their lighting plan. They have submitted a lighting plan that shows those foot candle meter readings around their proposed parking areas, but we're expanding that out to see what those readings would be at the property lines surrounding the site, including the adjacent residential properties. I would like to maybe call on Chris Ward to talk a little more about the lighting on the towers.
Good evening again, councilmembers, mayor. So with regard to the silo question, this was something we discussed on a call after the meeting last Thursday. And it's some sort of confusion. I don't know where it arose from, but there was a comment made at the public session last week saying that we were going to be lighting up the silos. There was going to be some uplighting. That is not the case. We don't illuminate our silos. So I'm not sure where that comment originated from, but it was not part of our submission. So that's just an error in perception. As far as the site lining, you're correct. We've submitted a photometric study. It's being updated so that we can look at the meter readings at the property boundaries, consistent with state statute. There will be shielding on the lights, so there's ways in which we can control the lighting so that it doesn't exceed the thresholds that are permitted. So I think that issue will be resolved to the satisfaction of both the citizens and also staff and councilmembers.
So can you confirm there are no beacon-type lights on top of the silos?
No, no floodlights illuminating the silos, no major beacons, unless we were next to an airport area, and it was some mandated requirement by FAA. But no, even when we're close to the airports, we have to go through FAA clearance studies, so.
Thank you.
Would that study also include lights from the trucks as they maneuver around in the lot and shine to the lot line?
The photometric studies typically don't address that, but we can look at perhaps ways to increase landscaping surrounding the parking area and how the trucks maneuver through that site.
Who would like to speak next? Come on up. Please state your name and address for the record.
Beth Ilers. I live over on 250th Street on the west side of Eureka Township, not far from the proposed development site. I'm here because this doesn't just affect the citizens of Elka Newmarket, as was mentioned earlier. As a private well owner, I'm concerned about the large water pull the aquifer will have, that this company will have. Last Thursday, your expert stated that the aquifer could handle this deep pull. But what about the private wells that are set at a much shallower point? The cost to drill a new and deeper well is very expensive. I have lived out here long enough to have experienced the first housing boom of Elka Newmarket that overwhelmed the water treatment facility, and raw sewage was released into the Vermillion River. That continued until the Met Council stepped in. Now it's commercial boom, and here we go again. Water is in jeopardy. If I understood the official last night, or last Thursday, Elka Newmarket has only so much allotted space on the interceptor line as allowed by the Met Council. This company will use up that remaining space. I believe that means that no further development can then happen until the interceptor line is improved, and as you all know, that's a long way off. After hearing all the officials' presentations last Thursday, I found that what was missing was the upfront cost. In the earlier meeting, county officials stated, or one of the officials stated that the county had no interest in, or made no assurances that they would pay for the road improvements. So if I understood everything correctly from last Thursday, Elka Newmarket has to pay for a new water tower, an upgrade of the water treatment plant, and road improvements. And in return, Elka Newmarket citizens will get the smallest bite of the property tax revenue. And the citizens will have to pay three times the price of water they use, then the company will have to pay for the water that they use. None of that math makes any sense to me. With the addition of FedEx and Amazon, the commercial vehicle traffic traveling down to and from Connor Road 2 and 35 is significant at this time. That company will simply add to it. As you know, you know when it's 8:00 in the evening, because you just look at the parade of FedEx trucks coming down the road. This company will add to that parade. Yes, you need development. There's no question. And yes, that area is perfect for commercial development. It's right on the freeway. But for many reasons, this business is not the right business to go in there. Please make your decision be a very informed decision, not driven by a company that will have a big payoff, but rather a decision based on the voices of the majority of your citizens, which has been a loud and unanimous no. And the neighboring townships, like myself and Eureka Town, other residents in Eureka Township, that this will affect. Please do not let this particular company in. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you care to respond to any of the financial pieces?
Yes, I think the first question is with regards to the interceptor line. I think that's a misstatement. I think the capacity issue that was discussed is related to the capacity of the water distribution system for the city, and its capacity and need to replace capacity that's used by any business or any other use. And I'll have the city engineer respond to that. Then I can talk about water pricing, and then I can talk about other economic benefits to the city.
Rich?
We have no concerns about capacity of our distribution system.
Rich, can you pull the microphone close to your mouth, please?
Sorry. We have no concerns about the capacity of our distribution system to bring water. We talk specifically about water supply. Basically, firm capacity, which is our capacity to provide water with our largest well out of service. To maintain firm capacity, we would be putting in another well, but that's basically a backup well. We have enough well capacity at this point. We have enough water treatment capacity, and we have enough storage capacity. However, both phases of this project would reduce our ability to continue to grow, and that would be the reason for it. So we don't need it to serve this. We need it to continue to grow after this is in place.
Thank you.
Rich, can you speak to the capacity of the interceptor line?
The Met Council interceptor line is a 42-inch diameter. So, well, I'm not a large person, but I could still almost walk through it. Maybe I got it wrong. I'm short. I'd have to crouch a little bit. It's huge. It's designed to serve a city the size of Lakeville, 70,000, 80,000 people. The water pipe bringing water out is a 16-inch pipe, so we're nowhere near close to filling up the wastewater interceptor. This would, this would, in fact, their wastewater discharge is much less than their water usage, so we have no concerns about that.
Can I respond to that, please?
Sure.
Eureka Township looked at developing commercial about a year or two ago.
Ma'am, if you could come up to the podium, please.
About a year or two ago, and they were told by Met Council that that development was not going to be allowed because that particular interceptor line is near full. So, well, I got that straight from one of the Met Council representatives that came to our meeting. So we were told, no, we would not be allowed to develop commercial on the north end of our township because of that.
Ma'am, we can't respond to that. It's not information that came from us. We just know that, from the design or the context in which it was provided, we can just simply note that that pipe was sized sufficient to handle the capacity of the.
At this time, I think it would be important to get Met Council's input then, to say, to see whether or not it can, in fact, handle additional.
They're aware.
I had many recent discussions with them. We're.
You're sure that the public would be good?
And financial?
On the financial side, there was a comment about the water user paying half the rate. That's not the case. I gave a very thorough presentation last time. I would suggest that you go to the video from last time and look at my presentation with regards to pricing. There are two parts to the water bill that is paid by a water user. There is a base fee, and there is a usage fee. The base fee pays for fixed and some capital costs on the system, and it is equivalent to, in our current 2022, $34 per equivalent residential unit. For institutional, industrial, and commercial users, they pay multiples of that equivalent residential usage based, or unit, based on their usage. So, right now, based on the information we have, the first phase of Niagara would be equivalent to 1,551 ERUs. With Phase 2, the total would be 3202 with regards to how much they would pay. And so it would be the multiple of that. So they are paying proportionately exactly the same as every other user on the system, residential, commercial, or industrial. On the usage side, they are getting a reduced fee, but that also reflects the efficiency. The cost of delivering the water to Niagara in that kind of bulk is less than it is for the typical home. If you were to roughly equate Niagara, just for illustration purposes, to being roughly equivalent to the existing community, it's one pipe in, one pipe out, one account. We don't have to maintain all of that infrastructure. We don't have to deal with all of those accounts. We don't have to do all of the administrative maintenance, other related responsibilities, such as locates, et cetera, that we have to do with the rest of that system for that one account. And so the pricing structure that the city has proposed for not just them, but any other larger users, granted, they're the only one on that scale at this time, is a reflection of that efficiencies or economy, a scale of the amount that they use. So while the rate is less, when you look at the relative revenue that we receive, the net, it's proportionate. With regards to the other economic benefits, yes, with regard. With regards to the other economic benefits, yes, with regards to this, if you look at the total tax bill, we would receive the smallest portion of the tax bill off the property, but that would be at the same general rate structure of any other use or any other industry in town. It's just the portion we get as the city. However, the amount that the business receives for this, that we would receive for this is quite substantial, but that's not the only benefit. When you're looking at an industry of this scale, it's not just the taxes that you receive. It's also the taxes that benefit the school district, who is a consideration, that also support the county, which is also a consideration because those units of government use those property taxes to deliver the services to our residents and other county or district residents. The other thing to keep in mind is not only tax-based growth and diversification, but it's also the employment that it provides. So yes, it provides employment opportunities. I've heard the comment that, well, there's no guarantee that they're going to be residents from our community. Well, that's true in every business, but the opportunity is there, and it's local. So that improves the quality of life or potential quality of life for our residents. The other thing to keep in mind is when we're pursuing other businesses that would come to our community that provide goods and services, there's three things that they look for: employment, local employment, traffic count, and rooftops. With that local employment, it makes it more attractive because people tend to shop, buy goods and services close to where they work. It's something that businesses look for. So this business cumulatively with other local employment will make us more attractive to those types of businesses to locate in our community, which means more tax base, more diverse tax base, more employment opportunities, but it also means the availability of goods and services to increase the quality of life for our residents. And there is, as Mr. Presnicki had pointed out, and I had pointed out in my presentation last week, there's an economic benefit to our utility funds to having a large user on the system. The number-one concern, absolute number-one concern in our community for the last 15 years is the price of the utility bill. And when you have a large user on the system, it gives you greater capacity to control rates, and the best of all words, worlds, possibly do something positive with those utility rates. Growth is growth. They're more efficient than, let's say, an equivalent number of homes that would come onto the system because of the cost, and we talked about that, but you're also getting that revenue now. You're not building up over, how many years would it take for us to build 1,500 homes? And the gradual increase in revenue over that time as opposed to having it today, or when they, if they come with a Phase 2 and it's permitted at that particular point in time. So the question is, why would the city pursue a business like this? It's for all of those reasons. It checks a lot of boxes with regards to the city, with regards to economic development goals, and the finances of the city. There are other concerns, and people are here to talk about those concerns, and those are also part of the consideration, but when the question's asked financially, why? Those are some of the reasons.
Who would like to speak next? Hi. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is, short. My name is Connie Wirsalovel. My address is 25571 Drexel Avenue, New Prague. And I'm very much aware that I'm coming from a different perspective than probably everybody who's spoken so far. But I live in Helena Township, which is about three miles north of New Prague. Our well and our homestead draws from the Jordan Aquifer. I am your neighbor, who relies on clean water from the Jordan Aquifer. The decision you make to allow a corporation from California to draw down our water supply is one that affects way more than just the city of Elko New Market. I understand that the Jordan Aquifer actually crosses seven states. I am not the only neighbor so that this decision will impact. Groundwater is our, the citizens of Minnesota's, people's natural resource. With climate changing and the drought conditions that we've felt just the past few years, days without end without rain, high temperatures, low snow volume, is affecting the Aquifer and the citizens who depend on the Aquifer for their water. What a corporation may promise in the initial stages of making big profits from our water may not actually play out. In other words, they can promise anything, but who will keep them accountable with actual business practices? I tried to get some research in the back of my mind when this came up a couple of weeks ago, and I was hearing about it. There was something in the back of my mind that I had gotten. I live in Scott County, and I'd gotten either a letter or saw something in the scene, which is a Scott County, County newspaper, that told residents to be aware that the Jordan Aquifer, there were people in Scott County whose wells were going dry because of the drought conditions, and just to be aware of that. And I tried to find that again, so I might actually bring some facts here tonight, and I couldn't find that. But what I did find was an article, Southwest News Media Online, the U.S. Geographical Survey, and this was published August 8, 2016, and I quote, "Jordan Aquifer touches seven states and covers most of Iowa, where it is mostly underground. Experts say the Aquifer needs decades to recharge. In many places, including parts of Iowa, the water is being drawn from the Aquifer faster than it can recharge." Back in 2014, the Des Moines Register printed the same survey map and ran it as part of a story about how the Jordan Aquifer is being drowned, drawn down faster than it can replenish itself. Recently, the earth's population reached 8 billion. I can't imagine how much plastic we are going to generate. I'm sorry, my notes are... I wanted to say something about that. Using single plastic, single-use plastic as part of this... Okay, here we go. It's, the second point is, it's just as enraging, the fact that single-use plastic bottle is being used by this company. Since our population has increased so much, I can't imagine how much plastic our children and our grandchildren are going to have to deal with in the landfill. And let's be clear, landfill means Mother Earth. That's where this is going, to our earth. So I understand Elko New Market wanting to grow as a community and doing so by adding business to your new industrial park. How about you earn the reputation of seeking businesses that fall under the category of sustainable, green, and good for seven generations? Vote no on this bottling. Wisconsin did. They didn't want it, and neither do I.
Thank you.
Dave, there were some comments on the, specific to the aquifer, and I know you had spent some time talking about that at the presentation last week. Can you touch on some of the concerns?
Sure, yes.
And real quick, and I'm just going to interrupt you. When we respond to any questions or concerns, please don't interpret them as us trying to sell you on anything. It's just, when we're hearing things, we're trying to respond and get information out as quickly as possible, so, please.
Okay. First of all, you had a question or a comment about dry wells within Scott County. Certainly, the drought, you know, affects water levels.
You're having trouble hearing you.
If you can just pull it closer. Yep.
The drought will certainly affect water levels, particularly in shallow wells. You know, as I presented last week, the Jordan Aquifer is very deep. There's a lot of hydrostatic or pressure head that comes above the top of the aquifer. So when water levels in the Jordan drop because of drought conditions, which we showed fluctuations in this area of maybe 10 feet or less, really, that has no impact on water levels or wells in the Jordan, okay? Private wells. Now, if you have a shallow well that's, say, 20 feet deep and a sand and gravel aquifer, that is more influenced or affected by extreme drought, short-term drought, and those will have a tendency to become more vulnerable in that type of situation. The second, I think your overall comment or general comment or question was the, you know, some of the depletions in the Jordan across, you know, the seven-state areas, particularly Des Moines, and there are declines in that area. There are declines in the Chicago area, very well-known. You know, those areas are being depleted. There's things being done now in those areas to kind of restore the recharge in those areas because there are concerns. In Scott County, what we've seen, based on, again, the historic data that we've looked at, some of the hydrographs, the water levels in the Jordan, that compared to the volume of pumping that's going on in the county, you know, levels in wellfields that we've looked at in this area are relatively stable. You know, we have not seen a, we're not seeing a decline, and that is with, you know, the pumping that has continued to grow, you know, in this area. So based on the period of record, that's what we've seen.
Could you talk a little bit of, this is the second time, recharge rate, a long recharge rate has come up?
Sure, yeah.
What that really means?
Thanks, Rich, yeah. So it does take decades to recharge. Some places, you know, it's less than that. Other places, it's more than that. You know, a lot of that water that was, you know, originated in the Jordan was, you know, 10,000 years ago when the glaciers melted, okay? Well, when it recharged at that time or filled it up, precipitation did not stop, right? It continues even with drought. You may get a period of drought, but then precipitation comes back, it infiltrates, so it's, it's ongoing, okay? It does take a long time for it to recharge, but again, it's continued to do that over time, and as precipitation continues, it will continue to recharge, you know? And you will have those periods of drought, those fluctuations, but from what we've seen in that period of record with some wells in the area, you know, it responds well to recharge.
I think when you say recharge over a long, it means it takes a long time for that water to penetrate the surface and flow through the 200 to 300 feet of overlaying material, but it's constantly happening.
Constantly being recharged, yes.
Thank you. Who would like to go next? Come on up. Please state your name and address.
I'm Kristy Schofield Thompson. I live at 25831 Pillsbury Avenue. I know better than to ask who of you voting or helping to support this would like to live by an industrial park. So I signed up just to ask. I didn't talk last week, but just want to make sure that you guys are considering what it's going to be like to live across from this. Never thought that field would be industrial, and it is supposedly. So, just from the last meeting, I just want to ask again, what consideration has been done, made since the last meeting for the residents, existing residents that are adjacent to this proposed property to mitigate negative impact? I mean, there's, there's quite a few, and they're real, and they're going to be real every, every single day, every single minute for these people. Those people that aren't going to be living across from it, you can sleep nice at home where you chose to live, not have these sound lights traffic in that specific area. Again, who wants to live by an industrial park? Anyone? Not me. So I just want to make sure that you guys are still thinking about the sound impact all day long, all night long, because this is proposed, that it'll be spread around the clock, right? It's not going to be a peak time. It's going to be evenly distributed, so we're going to have nice truck sounds, noises, starting up in front of those houses all night long. And then, again, the headlights aimed at those residences all day, and the lights, we talked about the lights a little bit, floodlights and what have you, whatever there is for the parking lots, and then traffic. I mean, those are just some of the concerns. I really want you guys to remember all the people that are going to be impacted 24 hours a day. This isn't just water use for them. This is their home. This is where they live. They're existing. They were there. I just need to know, you guys are thinking about them, right? Yes would be a good answer.
Yes is the answer.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
But to expand on, I'll expand on that a little bit, but I don't want to interrupt you from your time if you have more to comment on.
Just, I mean, really, the basic part of my question here is, are you guys going to push and make sure that you have some kind of mitigation landscape? I'm not saying that's the end-all, but it's the start. These residents don't know anything what to expect except what they can imagine. They've been not worked with, not really communicated with. There's nothing on the maps, nothing proposed that shows any kind of a buffer, really. So I just want to know, are you guys working on this? Are you considering these people?
Thank you. Yeah.
I would say the answer to that is yes. Since the last city council meeting, we have had a detailed meeting with the project development team in looking at ways that we can improve landscaping, improve lighting, and is there ways to incorporate birmingham on the north side? We are, potentially requiring a noise study. We're looking into requiring that, so we are looking, we did hear at the last meeting, and those are things that we've already met with the development team on.
Yeah, and just to even echo that point slightly, this is why we have public hearings. I mean, we're not going to be able to come to the table with a complete flawless project. We want to hear from the residents, not just within Elko New Market, but around Elko New Market, that this impacts. And that was one of the messages, at least myself, but I'm sure other council members have, and certainly city staff, has heard, come across loudly with the community, is really think carefully how this is going to impact the residents in this, that are going to be adjacent to this development, and figure out what kind of solutions, what kind of things we can do to make this, make this a better, more livable scenario. Whether it's going to, I'm not going to tell you that it will never be an industrial park. This has been guided and planned as an industrial park for a long time, but I do think there's things that we can do as a city to try and minimize that impact as much as we can, so we are hearing that.
Okay. I just want to make sure that that's clear because I don't think Niagara or anyone else coming in really cares about the residents. I need you guys to.
We do.
I really need you guys to.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Who would like to speak next? Please state your name and address for the, for the record, please.
Mike Lucas. I live on Woodcrest Lane in Elko. I took a bunch of notes the other night. My wife said I couldn't speak. I'm glad she did because now I can speak tonight, but I don't remember what... No, she knew I'd come up and call you guys a bunch of... So I'm glad she did. But some of my notes don't make sense now. But how long does it take for the income you're going to get off of this to cover all your investment before it actually is income for the city?
Sure.
Yeah, you're going to make money, but when does it actually pay off?
Sure. Did you want us to answer that now, or did you have more to...
Sure.
Yeah. Jake, I know you had just updated on the connection fees.
Yeah. So if we're talking, I'm assuming you're talking about the SACWAC connection fee reduction?
Well, that's coming up. No, the tax revenue that comes into the city, but the city has expenditures in order for this to come off, correct?
We don't have direct...
No expenditures from the city whatsoever?
That are specific to this project?
Yeah.
No. I mean, this project will demand some limited amount of public services, probably less than a neighborhood on the same acreage?
No, no. How long, whatever the expenditures are, the city is going to make some revenue off of that company. When are the expenditures paid off?
So we receive different types of revenue off of this. One is property tax related, and just, I'm going to give a little bit of public finance one-on-one. It's not one giant pot of money. If you can think about old-school finances in your house, you have one envelope that covers certain things, and it has its own revenue. So you have the mortgage envelope, and you put so much in the mortgage envelope, and it's only used for the mortgage, and you have the insurance envelope, and you have the gas envelope and the grocery envelope. Within public finance, we have several big buckets or envelopes that we have related to public finance. The first one is the general fund or property taxes, and that funds things like streets and parks and city hall and police and fire and those types of items. There are no significant or specific expenditures related to property taxes that we are specifically undertaking specifically related to this project. So once they start paying property taxes, just like when you build your house, you pay partial property taxes the first year and then full property taxes after that, we will start having property tax revenue associated with it. On the water and sewer side, there are improvements that need to be done. On the sewer side, there are... On the sewer side, there are stuff that needs to be done, but not specific to this project. They are system improvements, meaning that they serve, yes, this project, but they also serve a larger geographic area of pretty significant size. And so, for instance, I've heard individuals, I've had discussions with, well, what about that water main you ran out there for Niagara? On the south side of two. That water main actually is the backbone for providing water to that entire portion of the community now into the future, between France Avenue all the way out to the other side of 35, all the way north and all the way south. So we're talking hundreds and hundreds of acres of area that it potentially serves, and ultimately provides looping which serves the existing community. The same would be for a well, same would be for a water tower. So I think it's a specious argument that those investments are specific to Niagara and would be included in a payback scenario. With regards to water and sewer, it is a fair question of what, how much, how long would it take for their payment of fees to cover any subsidies that they receive? Less any increase in operating costs? That is a very reasonable question, and I'll defer to Jake because he has those literally pulled up in, in front of him.
Yep, so on the presentation from last Thursday, the gross subsidy was compared to the gross revenue for the project, and that showed a 0.58 year return on investment for the sewer or the SAC, and a 3.43 years return on investment for the WAC. Then we had some questions from residents, maybe looking at the net would give you a better idea of the true cost. So we did the different calculation for the net subsidy compared to the net revenue. The numbers changed a little bit. On the sewer side, the SAC, your, the return on investment is 0.96 years. So you're still under one year on the sewer side on the water. It went from, I think I said 3.43 years, yep, and that got increased out to 3.77 years.
So still under four years. So there was a small adjustment, but still very close to the initial.
That isn't, maybe I didn't word it quite right, that it really isn't exactly what I was looking for. But that was, okay. Now, you brought up the WAC and SAC charge. That reduction to them is the biggest insult that this city council could put on the Woodcrest community. I don't know who, who on the council even knows that Woodcrest has private wells. Now, the other night said if someone asked, what if the private wells go dry? Well, that's not expected for the private wells to go dry, but there's no guarantee. And then someone commented, yes, there is access to the city water. At what cost? And then we get stuck with a high water bill, you pay for the installation, and the WAC and SAC charge, those houses, this is off subject a little bit, but nobody on the council, the first thing they're going to say is, we weren't on the council. When the city sewer went in, city couldn't afford it, that addition paid, we weren't assessed. And I asked the mayor, Gene Bency at that time, would I be assessed? She said, no, she was absolutely right. But they raised the mill rate as much, the max for the last 50 years to pay for that sewer. And I've been paying for it, and you will not, this has been brought up, you will not discount the WAC and SAC charge to those residents, but you're, you're willing to give these guys a big discount to come into the city. That is the biggest insult this council could give to that part of the city.
That's a fair point.
Yeah, you bet it is. And we've been over this, time after time after time, and here you are giving the WAC and SAC charge away. That really burnt my ass the other night when I saw that on that sheet. Okay, we covered that. And I, I know it's not going to do a damn bit of good. But the city is creating problems, government comes along, we create problems, now the government's going to try and fix them. That's a joke. Like I say, some of my notes from the other night aren't, I should have asked them then. But one thing my dad told me my whole life, figures don't lie, but liars can figure. That's the way I look at this. I guess I better quit there, because I might get carried away.
Points are well taken, thank you. Who, who would like to go next? Please.
Sorry, making sure my kid doesn't wake up in the process here.
We're not entertaining enough?
Nope, but I wonder if he hears my voice, if it will be.
Please state your name and address.
Yes, my name is James Holden, and I am behind the face of Rebecca Holden from the other night. So I did make it, 8952 240th Street in Lakeville. I just want to start by saying that I, I'm not in support of this. The financial benefits of tax and other resources of revenue and the meager job growth just simply don't outweigh the identified potential, the identified and potential unforeseen impacts of this business on our community. Simply put, the people of our community are, are more important than the profits. It's that basic to me. One example is this idea, there's the, the average income that they're saying they're going to pay people, what, I think it was like 40 to 50,000, something like that?
50 to 60.
50 to 60, so, yeah.
To your point, yeah.
Point is, a dual income household with both people working there can't afford to live here. They can't afford to buy a house in our community at that rate, and also have a decent quality of life and be an active and productive member of our community. Now, that aside, I, I do, I submitted some questions about the aquifer thing, and I think you were the gentleman speaking last time, is that right? Great, so I am not an expert on aquifers, but I'm highly knowledgeable about the consumption of milkshakes. Okay, so when I consume a milkshake, I suck very slowly, and I really savor my milkshake, and it goes down on a, on a predictable kind of rate, right? And all goes down pretty uniformly. So, but if I really have a hankering for a milkshake, and I'm really looking forward to it, I don't just go in there at my normal rate, I go in there at like maybe, say, close to three times the rate. And I suck significantly more from a specific point, not from a wide range of points. So my question to you, I have five actually, by the way, sorry. If Niagara comes in and they love their profits as much as I love my milkshakes, which is a lot, they will suck significantly more than we suck right now. Again, I'm not, I apologize if I'm not using the right language here, but it will create a sudden increase of sucking onto our water source. So sudden, isolated, not broad in general. So five-part question. Number one is, in the information that we were given on Thursday, and it was kind of spotty, difficult children, wife falling asleep, trying to pay attention, but there was one data point that was identified to what I, from what I could tell, where it was over a 40-year span, the aquifer fluctuated something around like 10 feet, something like that. How many times within that 40-year span was there a sudden increase on sucking at the rate that Niagara plans to suck water within the immediate area of that data point? And what impact did those instances have on the aquifer and the surrounding groundwater? Do you want me to keep going, or do you want to answer that one first, sorry?
Well, he, Dave's kind of keeping track of the questions, and we're a little bit out of time.
I'm happy to move on, yep, yep. So nope, that's fine. So I, without having an answer to that, I'm going to move on to the next one, because I, you, you may answer it and not have to move on to it. But, so since typical growth is gradual and theoretically more widespread, if we're using, if we're using like private wells, things like that, and therefore more uniform demand, and this project would create a sudden substantial and isolated increase on demand, is it possible that the sudden increase caused by Niagara sucking would have a different impact on the availability of the water to not only the city wells, but wells at different shallower depths? Which goes to number three, so it's all kind of leading. If Niagara sudden, if Niagara suddenly sucking and therefore increasing the demand on our current source were to create a fluctuation that was maybe unforeseen in the availability of water, at what radius from that city well? And at what depths would we expect to see that impact over that, that span? And in addition to that, how many wells are we talking that are going to be impacted by this? If we're planning on pumping water, you could be talking a lot of piping to be putting out there. So, fourth, if existing residential wells and wells used by businesses in that vicinity were to be impacted, would those residents and businesses be offered some sort of financial benefit? I would prefer BiViag, Viagra, sorry. Niagara, I'm surprised it took me that long for the record, I'm trying not to say that. I'd change the name, but, so. What, what, what financial benefit, what financial guarantee, what guarantee we have that my water bill will not go up any more than it already is right now? Which, by the way, it was the investment of my well, and it's good, clean, quality water. So my last point, and this is not necessarily related to that. In the agreement or contract with Niagara, what safeguards are in place to monitor and limit the amount that Niagara sucks and protect the community if any unforeseen variables have negative impacts on our water source or our community in any other way?
So the first three questions are all yours, Dave. Okay, thank you, great questions. I love the analogy, I love milkshakes still, so.
I prefer chocolate if you're interested in bribing me.
Uh, no whipped cream.
I'm with you there.
Yeah, yeah. First of all, a straw in a milkshake is a great analogy. I mean, it is, it, it represents what an aquifer does when you, when you, when you suck water out of it, just like a milkshake, okay? I mean, you get, you get a little cone, right? It kind of develops around the center. It's called a cone of depression.
Yep.
Okay, so that radiates outward, okay? And as it moves outward, it's less and less, okay, yeah, away from the well. And, and you'll have the most drawdown or the steepest part of that cone around the well, okay? Depending on how prolific or transmissive that aquifer is, will depend on how far that cone expands, and how much drawdown you get, and how far away, okay? We did a very preliminary analysis back in June, which I referenced last week, where we looked at previous aquifer pumping test data specifically from the city's wells. And based on those parameters, we can estimate what that radius is, but more importantly, say, within a half a mile, you know, where, where wells potentially have the impact, you know, or potentially could be impacted. What is that drop in that water level in that well, okay? And again, we're looking at the Jordan, and if you remember, it has 140 feet of head above the top of the aquifer, which means all those wells that are in that aquifer have an equivalent amount of water above it, okay? So based on our preliminary analysis, and again, we were very conservative on that, we estimated maybe five to 10 feet of decline a half a mile away, okay? If you move a little bit closer, it increases, okay? So that's a very rough estimate, okay, very theoretical. As part of the permitting process, DNR, and Seth mentioned this, DNR will require this aquifer test to be more site-specific. They will select a number of wells that are representative of other wells in the area in the Jordan, and those will be monitored, okay? So that will be part of the permitting process, their technical review process, to obtain that information, okay? To evaluate the potential for, you know, risk of, of influence.
So, so just to be clear though, it's, it's, we're acknowledging that there is a potential risk to this?
At this point in time, there is. We just don't, we just don't have enough data.
We don't have enough data to know how widespread that risk is, the extent of the risk.
Right, and that's part of the permitting process as this goes forward that DNR will be involved with.
Okay.
And, and they will regulate that.
So there's a lot of data that needs to be collected before we can move anywhere with this, is what we're saying?
No, not necessarily. I mean, it depends on DNR. They're going to look at this and say, well, you know, I mean, some areas they may say, you know, this is going to require a, a, a 30-day test, some day, some, it may require a three-day test. So it all depends on what their review process is going to be at the time.
And will that, will that kind of process also take into account the, the refill rate, or what do you want to call it? I mean, unless, unless we, we have an army of people from Hogwarts, it doesn't just magically appear, right?
Right, no, the recharge rate. How, how, yeah, another important factor is not what, when you pump, where is that rate of influence?
Correct.
Just as important is when you turn that pump off, how quickly does that come back?
And where does it draw from, too?
Sure, that's all part, yes, yeah, yeah. And, you know, what we've seen in Scott County and some preliminary data from the city itself, this aquifer recovers very quickly, back to the pre-pumping conditions.
Did they have a time?
I would say, you know, when we have to look at, I've got some plots here I could show you, but a preliminary test that was done in the city several years ago as part of the wellhead protection plan, it recovered within an hour and a half.
Hour and a half, okay.
Yeah. And that's something, again, with this test, that once this goes forward, you know, that will all be part of this.
So the sample size will, will grow much, much larger over time?
Just, I heard you mentioned several wells. The, so Niagara will drill no wells?
Correct.
They'll all come from the city, those wells exist today.
Yes.
We do plan to install one well, but it's more of a backup well.
Yep, you know, I, I gathered all that, I'm more interested in, in how much they're going to suck.
Right, but you'd talked about lots of piping and more wells and holes.
Oh, that's if, that's if there's an impact, it's going to be a pretty big burden to the community
I get you.
For it to be branched out. I mean, like, I live a long ways from any city well right now. And there are, you know, private businesses, flower farms, things like that, that rely on constant steady source, so.
Okay, did you get the first three questions answered?
Yeah, we need more information, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. In terms of your concern about, you know, who pays for what, right? You know, that was something that was brought up at the hearing on Thursday as well, and my comment at that same time was, that's something we'll have to have a conversation with, with our staff. So it's not something that we were, it's not something that I'm going to lie to you and say I have an answer for you, is how exactly that's going to be, that would be handled. We're being told, or suggested that that's not going to be an issue, but it is something that we should have a backup plan for is how we would address that. So not going to be able to answer that for you right now, but it's something I'm happy to follow up with you on and follow up to the greater public as well.
Certainly, can I adjust the question slightly? So I live, I'm technically a Lakeville address.
Sure.
So would you guys be pumping, if, if this were to happen, right, theoretically, would you guys be piping water all the way up to my house? Or would you be telling Lakeville they have to do it and still meet whatever, I don't know? So you have some version of a, of a, of a relief for people affected?
Yeah, I mean, that, that's a pretty specific question, I don't know how, how I could answer that, Rich.
Oh, Seth, you got a?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, and, and on that, if there are well impacts, that tip that would, if you had an impact to your well from a new well going in here, typically that means you are probably in the Jordan aquifer. And what that would mean is that there's, most likely, the easiest thing to do would be to lower your pump. It's probably not down in the well far enough. You have, if you're in the Jordan aquifer, you're 300 feet in the ground or more. That's just as simple as lowering that pump down further to get farther into the water level if there are any impacts to that, and that's the simplest thing, and it's a relatively straightforward, easy process to do.
Correct, you know, I, I, I get that, but it, it's going to come at a financial cost to, to, to us. Yep. Or, or let alone, I don't know how many people even know how deep their, like, I don't know if my well is in the Jordan aquifer, I mean.
Yeah, that, it, it's in the county well index, so it's a Minnesota well index.
I, I mean, like, but again, I think that's, that's some of the concern that people have is like, great, so I have to go and lower it, but I'm still going to have to pay for that.
Seth, do you have information on whether the, is that a condition of a permit for a well that's causing interference that the DNR would require you to cut, you know?
Yeah, if, if there are impacts to it, if the, by the city drilling a well, there are impacts to it, typically the city will assist with that process.
Right, but it, it's not the drilling of a new well that I'm concerned with, it's how much Niagara will suck that I'm concerned with. Like, if the, if, like, you can say, oh, we didn't have to drill a new well, so we don't have to be responsible for that then. So, but if that's the only variable that's changed, I'm just trying to understand, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to be absurd.
I don't think I, were you, are you talking about your well?
I'm, uh, the wells within whatever vicinity of that space. If they were to be impacted, if that's the only major variable that's changed, and, and it's not been the new well, because like you said, it would be a backup well.
Whether it's a new well or more pumping, I would imagine the DNR is going to require us to help figure out how to fix those.
I want to keep the public hearing moving a little bit.
Yeah.
And I know you sent an email and you and I, or maybe a message, but you and I corresponded on that.
Yep.
Would it be okay if we get back to you offline?
Yeah, I just, I think there's a lot, I've had a lot of people reach out to me with the same questions, so.
And they're, and we'll certainly publish everything, and this period is going to be published, and we'll put everything out there into the public, but I just want to keep the hearing moving a little bit.
Okay, sounds good, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your answers.
Oh, and your last question was regarding the, the limit of how much can be pumped out. That's something that we're currently in, in the process of working through. Who would like to go next? Now, I, I know you had spoken once before, so, and I'm not gonna cut you off, but is there anyone who hasn't had a chance to speak yet that would care to speak? So, ma'am, I wanna let the folks speak first who haven't had an opportunity yet.
Mine was a kind of a follow-up, but that's okay. I'm happy to.
Okay, thank you. Come on up.
Well, thank you for this opportunity. I'm Susan Kleesner. I, um, am at 9387 Aspen Road. I'm Newmarket Township, but, you know, Lakeville address. And I, I wanna, I have just a couple of short comments. I'll breeze through those in a moment. But I want you to understand, coming into this, I wasn't here on Thursday. You guys really come off as, you've already made your decision. And that, sitting back here, just coming in now, it's like, this is a done deal, you know, live with it. That's how you come off. I don't know you. I actually live in the township, but as a first comment, that's how you come off, and that's, that's discouraging. But where I'm simply from is, um, I live just a few miles north here. My husband and I built our house in 1986. Of course, we have a well. We've lived here 36 years. This is the first thing that's come across to me that really feels like it threatens my life here, because I love it here. I love our little acreage. I love my house. I love my neighborhood. And yet, you come across to me as saying, well, you know, we're just gonna do something about the water. But to me, climate change is real. I mean, you look at the extremes in our weather. Drought is real. Look at Lake Mead. Look at our own area where the water is down, like White Bear Lake. I mean, you can so, find so many examples around here that show that climate change is real and drought is real. Water is not going to be here forever, and we have to guard it. So that's my, my basic concern, that you are coming off as very short-sighted, that it's just, what does this do for jobs? What does this do for money? What does this do for this, and not looking at the big picture? So, I'm not gonna go on very long, but that's my concern. Please think of the bigger picture. Please think about the community. Please think about the quality of life that we enjoy here, and that's where I'm coming from. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yeah, I think I saw one more hand from someone who hasn't spoken yet. Okay, come on up.
I thought I'd be second. I'm next.
Go ahead.
Whoever hasn't spoken yet is welcome to approach the podium.
Good evening. My name's Evan Mulhall, and thanks for giving me the opportunity to talk. I live in Minneapolis. I'm here, um, and I work at the Minnesota Center for Environmental Advocacy. And I'm gonna be really brief. One, aquifer's a shared resource. We all have stewardship responsibilities towards it. People outside of this town care about it. That's one of the reasons why I'm here. And my, if I were you, I would wait until after the EAW is completed, until you make your decision.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else who hasn't had a chance to speak yet? Yes, please, come on up.
Hello. I'm Lorraine Rovig, and I appreciate the civility with which everybody's operating. And I absolutely am quite upset that it does appear your minds are made up that you're looking at the numbers. You're not looking far enough back. Forty years is not long enough.
Can I, I'm sorry, can I interrupt you real quick?
Lorraine Rovig.
What's your address?
My address is 1005 Washington Street, Northfield. And I'm in this aquifer too, and whatever you guys do will affect my town. I'm in the town. I should have good water and no problems, right? Not exactly. Um, yes, it's expensive to have water in sewer. It's one of the great amenities of our modern age. We don't have too much, um, uh, black plague anymore. We don't have, you know, too much of the diseases that were carried by bad water systems of the past. But the aquifer, although it seems extremely big, that's what they thought about Lake Powell. The Mississippi River, for Pete's sake, the Mississippi River was not deep enough to allow barge traffic like it always had. So, thinking that we'll just let Niagara pull out this water to its megaton plant, it won't be a problem. We'll figure out how to buffer the park so that nearby neighbors have less burden. Something there will be done. It won't be as much as it was before, but yes, things do have to change. Hopefully, not that much. But the real problem is climate change. The real problem is we don't have enough water. Every desert state business, including this California business, they want our water. Don't just give it away as this plan appears to me to be doing. You've all done a lot of due diligence. You've pulled up a whole bunch of numbers, done a whole bunch of study. I'm really glad I'm not in your chairs, 'cause I wouldn't wanna work that hard. I appreciate it, but I really think you're not looking over a big enough span, and you're not looking ahead comparing it to what's happening out west, what's happening on the west side of our state. And, you know, Northfield has to worry about what you're doing. Isn't that something?
Thank you. Anyone else who hasn't had an opportunity? Please, come on up. Please state your name and address.
My name's Melissa Lenhart. I live at 331 James Parkway, Alcoa Newmarket. I have a few things that I'm going to ask, a few questions. Um, the first one that I'd like to know is, in November of 2021, there was 13 hours of data pulled for the, um, traffic study. One, I'd like to know what those hours of data were, and if this plan is going to be running 24/7, why there was not a longer study done? Um, item five on your requirement states traffic generation by the proposed use is within capability of the street serving the property? And what is the study for that? Two, the language in the city's business assistance policy under item eight four, page three, states that assistance will not be provided to projects that have the financial feasibility to proceed without the benefit of assistance. If that's the case, then why are we giving them assistance? Prior to consideration of a business assistance request, the city may undertake an independent underwriting of the project to help ensure that the request for assistance is valid. How does the city intend to deal with this? That's my second question. Will the city, third question is, will the city put a cap on the amount of water Niagara can use in a given year? Will it be in a contract? Or would the amount negotiated annually, or will this be in perpetual, and we have no say in it? When that aquifer gets low, what are we going to do when we have no rights to how much they withdraw? Four, it states that, on the, our website, it states that the community will see a tax benefit, but it may take several years. Could you explain what that means? And I think that was explained to the gentleman earlier. I have one more question. This is for you from LRE. If you want to ask him, um, what studies need to be done if this aquifer is in an area of the country with water right laws that require showing the city isn't pumping more than they're not entitled to? And that's my questions.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Um, I'm, we'll jump around on the questions, 'cause I wanna first talk about the subsidy piece. So, the members of the city council, there's open meeting laws. We cannot have conversations that are not, we can't have conversations about this that are not out in front of the public, so.
Right, they have to be recorded.
Yeah, so I, I understand that there's a perception that this is a done deal, that, you know, we're just trying to go through the process of a public hearing, and, you know, all our minds are made up. I couldn't tell you in all honesty where anyone else on the city council stands. Our job is to get the facts. We have a city staff that's worked very hard on getting facts together for us, but we haven't even had a discussion on that yet, so.
On what?
On the business subsidy piece that we're having the public hearing for, so. Or whether the, this project is the best possible fit for Alcoa Newmarket. We may all have opinions, but.
When will that meeting be held?
Once the, uh, the petition that was made was sent to the DNR, once they have gotten back to us, we have the ability to take action on the application. So, I think we're anticipating mid-January before we'd be able to, is that correct, Tom?
And that'll be a public meeting?
The earliest that the council would be able to act on it, based on our meeting schedule, would be our January 12th meeting.
Okay.
But depending on the timelines with the DNR, it could be later than that.
So, and we're, and it was important that we have this public hearing, and we were all hearing public feedback before we can even have those discussions. So I, I understand that while that perception may be out there, but for those of us that actually have to vote on it, we haven't had any discussions, and we don't know where any of us, anyone else is on that. So there's more information for us to be finding out. So, I just, I wanted to address on the subsidy piece, 'cause your point's a valid point.
Yep.
It does need to be proven that it, that it's a need, so. I don't have the exact answer for that, but I just wanted to clarify that process, so.
Thank you.
On, there's a.
Traffic?
Traffic, yeah. Who wants to?
Can we call on Mike? Yes, please.
He has no microphone, so he's gonna come up.
Okay. Oh, I see.
Um, so your first question, the 13-hour count period was between 6:00 AM and 7:00 PM, and that's just a very standard window of time that we do to collect that data.
Mm-hmm.
Um, typically, in any given area, 85% of the daily traffic volume happens between that window. So that's just kind of the general starting point. Um, and then also what happens between that window is your morning and afternoon rush hour. Now, those are the two periods that we're most concerned about, right? So that's why those were the hours that were collected.
If, if there... If you're not collecting data within those time points, though, we really don't know. We're just guessing, correct? We're, we're guessing that because it's not during typical rush hour times, that there isn't any, there isn't a greater traffic need?
I, I think anybody that's commuted out, or driven through the interchange outside those hours, when you're doing the analysis, you're looking at the stress on the, the system.
I have a son that comes home from south of here after 7 o'clock a few times a week, and he literally cannot turn left to get home. He cannot. Okay, so that's after the time of this study. I, I'm just asking, rather than guessing, do it due diligence before you add all these trucks that are gonna be blocking the highways. There's trucks already sitting out on the exit ramps all day long. I cannot turn on those exit ramps without a trucks, or two, or three, sitting there. Just review it, please.
And your point's noted regarding that, so thank you. Uh, who wants to field the next question? Can you remind us what the next, what the next question was?
The last one was, um, for the LRE.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, LRE's over there.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do I have it backwards?
Thanks for the compliment.
On the, on the video, it's swapped.
Hi.
Was that related to the water rights question?
Yes, yes.
Minnesota follows eastern riparian rights or water rights, not western water rights, so it's, it's, you know, owned by the state, for the people of the state as a resource.
What about the people that are in Iowa?
People in Iowa? I'm not sure about Iowa.
Okay, will that affect? How will that affect if people in Iowa start having issues with this aquifer, 'cause we're drilling from here?
We can't hear you. Sorry, in the background.
No, any, any, any pumping in Iowa won't have any effect up here.
Okay, I stand. Thank you.
Thank you. Great questions.
I wanted to have, I think Renee had did some kind of research into some industrial users, heavy industrial users of water in the area. Would you be able to share some of that data that you collected on how much they're pumping, where they're located? What, what you kind of found with that?
Like the comparative?
Yeah, the comparative of some of these industrial users that are in the region.
Is this like real scientific information, or is this just whoever answered the phone?
This is information directly from the Department of Natural Resources and their permitting database.
Yeah, if you can just give me a minute. So, water is supplied to, um, users either via municipal well, or, uh, in some cases, the DNR permits a large-capacity water user to drill their own well. So, I started reaching out to, um, some area cities just to ask who their top five water uses, water users were. And I just picked five cities, and I don't have all of the data yet. And the first city I called, I called Faribault, Northfield, Lakeville, Shakopee, and Savage, just to see who their highest volume, top five water users were, and how much they used on an annual basis. So I just wanted, like, take a step back for a minute and, um, kind of describe what Niagara bottling is proposing to use with their, um, two phases of development. So the first, uh, phase, 155 million gallons?
155 million gallons per year, doubling that with phase two and full buildout of the facility.
Yeah. So, the... The first set of information that, uh, came back was from, uh, the City of Faribault Utility Department. They said their top water user is Genio Turkey. In the first 11 months of this year, they used 317 million gallons of water. So that exceeds the full, uh, production or full phase of Niagara with both phases. Uh, they also have a food processing, uh, plant, or I'm not familiar with the company, but Faribault Foods used 203 million gallons of water in the first 11 months. Faribault Dairy, 30 million gallons. True View Inc., 26 million gallons, and the City of Faribault, 23 million gallons. Uh, so that maybe put a little bit of perspective. So, um, those were just looking at municipal water supply. So users that were going through some municipal water supply and waiting for the results from, um, Lakeville, Shakopee, Savage, and Faribault. I mean, I'm sorry, Northfield. So the next thing, um, that I did is, uh, there's a database available on the DNR's website that has all of the wells that they, the large-capacity wells that they submit, uh, permit. Includes all municipal wells, agricultural wells, used for, um, agricultural. There's also some businesses that are, that drill their own wells and draw their own water supply. And I just pulled out a couple in the area that were kind of high water users. So again, Niagara, looking at 155 million gallons for phase one, doubling that to 310 million gallons for phase two. Uh, Rar Malting in Shakopee, it's a business that's been there forever. They provide malt through, throughout the world. Uh, they're permitted by the DNR to, uh, pump 1.1 billion gallons through their private wells. And last year, in 2021, they actually pumped 650 million gallons out of their wells. Cold Spring Brewing was another one that I just noted. They're permitted by the DNR to pump 145 million gallons. And they pumped 145 million gallons last year in 2021. Coca-Cola is in the fairly near vicinity. They're permitted by the DNR to pump. Coca-Cola is in the fairly near vicinity. They're permitted by the DNR to pump 300 million gallons. In 2021, they pumped 136 million gallons for Coca-Cola. Pepsi is permitted by the DNR to pump through their private wells, 143 million gallons. They pumped 109 million gallons. And a couple other random ones that I picked was Afton Alps. For the purposes of making snow, they're permitted by the DNR to pump 129 million gallons, and they pumped 60 million gallons in 2021. And then the Shakopee School District, just randomly, just for irrigation of their sports fields alone, they pumped 16 million gallons out of their private wells. And I think, you know, the purpose of doing this was really to give the council, city council, a perspective, city council and the public and staff, a perspective on the volume of water that Niagara is proposing to use versus, you know, what is used in some other businesses.
Did you say used or removed? Talk about these businesses and how, how much they use?
That's how much they.
From a perspective of how much is actually removed or how much is returned by the system?
It's how much was removed.
Which they pumped from the aquifer.
And never returned locally?
Well, Coke and Pepsi would be moved.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. The, the idea here was just to provide some perspective on, you know, how Niagara relates to, with their water usage compared to other businesses and other jurisdictions, so.
And so the, the example's in Faribault. They pull from the same aquifers that the city of Alcoa New Market does. So Genio Turkey, for instance, in the 317 million gallons, it would be very similar aquifer, similar municipal city, municipal wells. I think they have a couple of more wells than we do in our community, but not significantly more.
Thank you, Renee. I want to keep the public hearing moving. Who has not had an opportunity to speak yet? If you haven't, come on up. Please state your name and address.
Mr. Mayor, just a quick clarifying question. I don't remember if it was the last public, or this last speaker or not. Can, can you state, Tom, or staff, that we have been in communication with Met Council throughout the process and will continue to throughout the process? Just so I don't say something incorrectly.
I had a Zoom call with Met Council staff yesterday. Just wanted to keep them informed of the project.
Please approach the podium and state your name and address.
Trevor Stewart, 9127 with Spring Hills Lane. First of all, just, I want to thank you guys. There is, a lot of people are very unhappy, but I can specifically say, if you saw me on Facebook begging for numbers, you know my name. Bryce, Josh, Joe, and Tom all reached out to me, all helped me get information. So thank you guys for that. I, I want to just make it clear that they're trying to help, in my opinion. It's not just some closed-door session. The numbers I was looking for didn't add up. I honestly was looking for numbers, so I didn't have to show up tonight. Tom mentioned that fairly, the $2.9 million project that runs to the new trunks, Down County Road 2 shouldn't be built entirely to Niagara. But $2.5 million of that project is still left on the bond. So one of my concerns with what is happening right now, if we reduce the fees, which we've talked about ad infinitum, of $2.9 million, which does kind of seem excessive, that leaves us a $2.5 million deficit to hold on to. Now, while that will recoup in 3.4 years, because this particular facility is going in, we're gonna have to put in a new well and a new tower. The new tower is gonna be put so far off to the side, it's not really gonna help our residents. It's gonna be industrial only. So if we ever need more water on this side, it's likely gonna require yet another tower. Water fatigue, I believe, was the quote used in the council session for that. $6.9 million additional debt is gonna be required to put in a water tower and a pump. If we do Phase Two, that's another $5 million, which I actually honestly was impressed with how little money it costs you guys to do an upgrade. I know Lakeville's looking at about $10 million to expand their facility in the next year. I did do some comparison on the, the rates. The industrial rate of $1.48 was put out for 1,000 gallons. Comparatively, I paid $2.86 for 1,000 gallons. That's the lowest tier the city offers, if I'm correct. The city calculates the cost per 1,000 gallons currently at 50 cents, which is abnormally low. Looking around, I found a study by Connecticut Department of Health that puts the cost per 1,000 gallons just over $2, but that did seem irregularly high. Using the connection fees and the cost that the city has for 50 cents per 1,000 gallons, the $6.9 million improvement for Phase One will take us 8.8 years to recoup. Phase Two will take another 3.18 years to recoup. And we're looking at 3.9 years to recoup the costs for what's already been done to run that trunk. So in total, we're looking at 12 to 15 years of return on investment, depending on if they do Phase One or Phase Two. My biggest concern is not the water usage, though I think it's only fair to compare water users who are shipping out, like the person behind me shared. My biggest concern is that we're going to run into the residential boom 2.0. The reason we're paying $2.86 right now is because we put in a facility, we adjusted our costs based on the expectation our population was gonna increase. The population didn't increase. We're sitting on the edge of a potential nightmare for our entire country from a money perspective. If this facility comes in, we are forced to spend 9.6 mil, or 6.9 million dollars to improve, and we're left with the budget because they closed down and we have no repercussions. We're hosed. I, while I don't think it's fair for them to have to pay the entire 6.9 million because it's serving more than just them, or for them to have to pay 2.9 million for the trunk that was run down there, that money's still needed. We need to offset that cost because I don't see how a return on investment of 12 to 15 years would be viable. On behalf of somebody else who didn't want to come up and talk, though, specifically related to these numbers, he was looking for any information you can provide on any timeframe we would get benefits. So there are people who are waiting around who are looking what benefits we will get from having this facility, and that's the only reason they're here. So if you want to respond with any of that, it's appreciated.
So.
Go ahead. We did touch on that at the very beginning.
I may have missed it. I was late.
I think specifically it's talking about what fees we collect and where they go.
I, I very.
And, and so you're kind of mixing and mingling this fee for that and not taking into account other fees that we collect. You're taking one specific fee and trying, that's collected for operational costs, and trying to apply it to costs that are supported with another fee that we collect.
I'm very specifically looking at the water fund.
Yes.
I understand these fees very well.
So within the water fund, we collect trunk fees from development based on acreage. This developer, this project, and Ryan is a developer, as they plan it, they will pay the same per acreage trunk fee that everybody else pays with regards to this fee. And we've calculated it out to collect the necessary fees to pay for capital infrastructure, such as wells, water towers, plant expansions, based on the acreage that's out there. It's simple math. It's gonna cost this much over time. This is how much we need to collect. With regards to the existing plant, and you said I pay as a resident $2.86 because of the waste, the water treatment facility that we built, that's incorrect. The water treatment facility does serve and did serve a portion of the existing community. That's being paid for on the base fee. That's being paid, and that's the same rate proportionally as it is for a resident, as it is for any institutional, commercial, or industrial user within the city. The benefit they provide is that sometimes there's a cash flow timing of you may not have, be collecting your trunk fees in case there is a economic downturn, et cetera, that you would like to collect those fees to be able to make debt service. Having a large user that's paying a lot of fees and usage fees helps with the cash flow. So by having a large user paying those kinds of fees, it mitigates the financial risk for those improvements. Granted, it would accelerate the timing of those improvements, but we would have to do, do those inevitably. And there's a timing.
That's over 10 years out, Tom.
It would be 10 years out, but at the time that we need to do it, if, let's say, they're equivalent to 1,500 homes, how long does it take to build 1,500, 1,500 homes after the point that you're doing that improvement versus having those 1,500 homes immediately?
Yeah, but we just put in $2.9 million to pay for structure into a facility that.
And so the financing, so the financing for that is very different. And again, that cash flow is based on trunk fees that are collected from development, of which they're paying their share. There's no reduction in their trunk fees, et cetera. Plus, with regards to that specific investment, we have an arrangement with the Scott County CDA where they underwrote the risk on that, so that.
Yeah, we gave up additional whack fees for that. Why do we collect sack and whack fees?
We are collecting the sack and whack fees that we would normally expect to collect off the exact same acreage for another typical use in the industrial park.
Exactly, but what are sack and whack fees prices set for?
Those are set to pay for fixed operating costs.
How are they based?
Or sack and whack fees.
Sack and whack fees are specifically based on the amount of usage there's gonna be. So if somebody runs a car wash, they're gonna pay a lot of more money than somebody who runs a truck, shipping facility.
Yep.
So if somebody uses up all of our water, all of my concern lies in the water fund. A lot of the development's gonna happen from the water fund. So we shouldn't be giving up the fees, and we can't afford to, to front-load them for that long versus another industrial user who won't require the same amount, as much as I, not everybody's poor industrial.
And that's, and that's the.
So I'm, I'm gonna jump in real quick. Did you have additional comments?
No, I.
Then otherwise I'll, when you're all set, then I'll let Tom.
Yeah, I'll actually step away so Tom can talk, unless you have something to add, Renee.
No, I was just.
No, I just, I wanted Trevor to finish his comments first, then we'll staff.
I just wanted some points of clarification because there seems to be a lot of confusion around the fees because they're awful. They're very confusing for everybody.
Sure.
But even Tom himself said on a previous meeting that we do collect these fees so that we can afford the future improvements. So we should be collecting those fees so that we can actually put it towards developing, so we can have those water things there. But I'd like to hear more about like long-term benefits, if you guys are able to offer in your meeting.
Thanks, Trevor. Tom?
So the sack and whack fees are generally intended to pay for replacement and repair of existing infrastructure. So as we talked about before, as a user, the infrastructure that they have that's existing would be the infrastructure that's installed within the industrial park, and relative to scale to the water usage, it's very different than the entirety of the rest of the community. We only have what's in the street. We aren't having to build miles and miles and miles of infrastructure relative to them that we would have to build for, let's say, the equivalent number of, of homes for the same amount of, of usage. Mr. Stewart.
Did you put a pipe out there?
Yeah. We did, and they're paying proportionately what we would expect to get off that same acreage for other users that would be locating out there. Mr. Stewart is correct. They are getting a reduction. And that reduction is intended to bring that community, but for providing these incentives. That business would not choose to locate here, and so it does become a cost. A cost benefit analysis relative to not collecting, because we're not writing them a check, relative to not collecting those fees, long-term, what is the financial benefit? And I think we've talked about that quite a bit earlier tonight.
We have, and this isn't, this isn't meant to be a debate. We want to hear from you, and these are good points that are being brought up. But I'm not, I don't want to turn this into a back-and-forth debate. This, that could go all night, and maybe we'll have another type of meeting. I don't know. But that's not what we're doing here tonight, so. Is there anyone else that cares to speak that hasn't had an opportunity? Please come on up. Please state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Maria Zubkova, and we live on 267th Street. So we are one of the residents where the proposed area is gonna be built behind. So many people have been sharing their voices and speaking up, so I thought it'd be a little wrong if I didn't speak up since it's affected me personally. As a daughter of a first-generation immigrant family whose parents' first language isn't English and can't be here to speak up for themselves, I just like to appreciate my neighbors, the community, my community, for standing up. I've never experienced a more bonded, more supportive community. We've been heard. We've been, I mean, there's people living like across town speaking up against this, and it's just been very, like, pleasant and nice. I'd also like to persuade you to maybe slow down and try to listen to the community and the voices that we've been hearing and have them take precedence over the community's, the town's growth, or, or money, or whatever we stand to take from this. You're not, not everyone here is living across from it. It's gonna be feeling and experiencing firsthand what it's gonna have, the impact on our lives. And just to take a, towards the end, you know what they say, and it's rang true through the agents, slow and steady wins the race for growth. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else that hasn't spoken either tonight or last week? All right. If not, we're not, I, I don't want to make this a complete repeat of Thursday night. If you spoke before and just have something real brief you'd like to add, maybe a minute tops, come on up.
We also got people online raising their hand.
We do have Zoom individuals that would like to speak, Mr. Mayor.
Shoot, I'm sorry. We, yeah, there are people online that haven't had an opportunity to speak. Jay? Can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep, we got you, Jay.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm Jay Rampin. I'm at 22720 Woodhill Drive, New Market Township. I just found out about the plans for Niagara after the Thursday meeting. So I didn't attend, but I did however watch it on YouTube, so thank you for that. I read the City of Alcoa New Market website fact regarding Niagara. After all that, I don't think you're looking at the big picture. I'm 100% against Niagara coming here. I'm 100% against any subsidies or price reductions for Niagara. To me, it's about protecting our aquifer for generations to come. It's about what the bottled water industry is doing. It's, they're turning a public resource into a private good. They take our most important, most vital, basic human necessity for less than we pay and turn around and sell it back to us for an astronomical profit. Worse yet, Niagara wants to send it out of state. In the big picture, the bottled water industry is hurting municipal water systems across our nation by displacing tap water and widening the wealth gap. You compare other bottling businesses and their water use, but one more is not the answer. Do you have it in legal writing that they will never ship outside of Minnesota, Wisconsin, Iowa, and the Dakotas? Because as the water crisis grows, at some point, it will make financial sense for Niagara's point of view, or from Viagra, sorry, from Niagara's point of view, to ship it to California and the Southwest. And it really doesn't matter because if you do have it in writing, they'll eventually use their power and lobby to change it, and we will suffer. Will they ever be allowed to drill their own well? Is our aquifer connected to any springs? Your presentations all stop at Phase Two. I have a very hard time believing that they would stop at Phase Two. What business does not want to grow and grow aggressively? From what I gathered from Thursday's meeting, my understanding is that you not look at Niagara's long-term growth at older locations, correct?
Are you asking if we look at their long-term growth at other locations? Is that, did I hear you correctly?
I've just, yes, I was, you know, so you, my understanding is you looked at sites that haven't been around very long because you wanted to see the building process and so on and so forth. But what about some of their early sites and how many phases of, you know, increased output and pumping have they gone through on average?
Did you have more comments? But if not, we can address that now, but I want to let you get your comments in first.
Sure, thanks. I'll go through the comments. I'm concerned about the water prices in the long-term future as demand substantially increases and supply decreases. I'm concerned about my well in both the short-term, relatively long-term, and long-term. I wasn't impressed at all by Niagara's presentation. Don't be fooled. They don't care about the wet land. They just don't want to pay twofold to replace it. Niagara claims to be a family business, or they're a family business, so is Walmart. Look what they did to our country, little by little, site by site. I looked at some reviews from employees that work there. The general rating they have for work-life balance is a 2.8 at Niagara, a 3.1 for pay and benefits, 2.8 for job security and advancement, 2.5 for management, 2.8 for culture. A lot of people, zero stars if possible, after management doesn't care about their employees. Awful place to work. Supervisor refused to train me, barely spoke to me. High turnover rates, more management complaint, toxic high school environment, and the list goes on. So I'm not, not really thinking it'd be a good place to work. So I'm not, not really thinking it'd be a good place to work with good morale. They also claim to use up to 50% of recycled material. Where I come from, 50% is an F. Apparently, there's a lawsuit involving Niagara over their 100% recyclable claims as well. I'm not sure of that outcome. U.S. city councils and most were neutral from the sites he looked at, but I doubt they'd be open to speak poorly about them. Looks to me, not too many, not too many people like Niagara, and I won't be surprised if it brings other problems such as large protests from outsiders to our town. Please don't let them in, once they're in, it'll be a constant battle between the people, the city, and big business for water. This is about morale, morals. This is about what's doing right. We can look at any number of infamous, infamous historical events and say, wow, I can't believe those people made that poor decision. How could they let that happen? How could they think that was okay? Think of any stain in our history, and now how can you even consider letting big business come in and take our water? Your kids' water, grandkids' water. We, the people, are against Niagara. Are you for the people? Who do you serve? Can we trust you to listen to us and do what's right? I ask you to say no to Niagara.
Thank you, Jay.
This may be one of the most important decisions in your life. Please make the right decision, the decision you will be proud of for years to come, the decision our descendants will be thankful for, and say no to Niagara.
Thank you, Jay. We're coming up on six minutes, and I'm trying to keep the time limited here. But I appreciate your comments, they're well said. And with regards to sites and expansion, who wants to address that?
Tom, you were out of here. The question I believe was, the cities that we contacted were Niagara had recently built, I believe it was 2015 or newer, and we did that in an effort to communicate with the staff that was around.
You guys are on mute, so we can't hear in this room.
How about, who muted us?
I did.
Okay.
I muted everybody.
So I believe the question was, why did we only look at the cities Niagara chose to recently build at? And that was really to talk to the staff that was there so we could ask them relevant questions that they experienced. But the question was, why didn't we look at cities with a longer history?
Specifically to gauge whether they used more water than they initially had said they would, whether they kept growing and expanding their usage, I think was the, the first question.
Okay, I'm not sure, I kind of heard two different things here, so.
They're the same question. Would interviewing older cities about Niagara's use patterns have been helpful?
The overall, and the overall concern was this, if they continue to grow, if there needs to be a phase three, if there needs, if they need to use more water than what's being proposed in the first two phases.
There could be a benefit to talking to cities where they have a longer, a long-term relationship, yes, for that purpose. Jake, I'm correct. Some of the cities we talked to, they did actually have expansions or were looking at expansions within those communities. Yeah, so we do have some of, some of that information was gathered with this part of it. But that is something we could invest additional time and talk to cities where they've been there for a much longer period of time and take a look at it. Because again, as part of the decision to make, provide an incentive, it's an indication that we think they would be a good benefit to the community and a good corporate partner, and we want to make sure that they say what they do and do what they say.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I do a follow-up to that? And I don't remember if it was Janelle from the last meeting or somebody else, but it sparked me, and that's why I looked at you when that question was brought up about the cities, and maybe Niagara can, can answer this. Have the cities that have existing facilities in them, had, they had to sign any NDAs or anything like that that would nullify like speaking freely on, on working with the company? Would we, if hypothetically things were to go forward, would we have to sign anything just to like mitigate or decrease the perception that, you know, we call all of these cities and there's something in place that prevents them from speaking accurately? I guess is a good way to put it.
So I'll field that question briefly, which is, as part of the site selection process, oftentimes we enter into NDAs with state and local government partners to keep the project confidential while we're in an exploratory phase. But that NDA doesn't extend to our operations. I've been with the company nine years, have been involved in, I don't know, 30 plant expansions. I'm not aware of any NDAs that have carried over into the operational cycle. I would also say that if there were an NDA in place, it would preclude them from talking about a particular issue on the whole, so they wouldn't be able to tell you good news or bad news. So the fact that they had positive stories and experiences to share is indicative of the fact that there's clearly not an NDA in place. So the short answer is no, there's not, to my knowledge. While I'm up here, I just wanted to take this moment to highlight one other fact, and that is, we actually agree with all of the commentary in the room tonight that water for personal consumption is the utmost, highest, and best use of this resource. We agree it's a precious resource, which is why, out of all the, as Renee highlighted, all the different manufacturing uses for water, all the different industries that use water, and let's face it, every industry uses water. This product, 100% of this package will be consumed by somebody at home. If you're looking at the full life cycle of water, if you want to get super technical, I mean, if it's being distributed and consumed in the greater Minneapolis, St. Cloud region, people are presumably, you know, returning that biologically back into the same aquifer. That, the same cannot be said about paints or textiles or other consumable goods that are produced here and shipped out of state into other areas. The water's used in that process and gone forever, that's not the case with this. So oftentimes, this beverage for consumption is just replacing tap waters. Instead of being at home and filling up a glass, you might be on the road, and you take a bottle of water with you and you consume it. Somebody during the last meeting mentioned, oh, it'd be cool if you were a brewery, would love to have a brewery or something fun. I wish we made alcohol too, that'd be awesome. Maybe I could get a discount on alcohol instead, but making beer, for instance, uses an average of seven gallons of water per gallon of beer that's, that's sold to the end user. So in terms of the efficient use of water, I can think of no more efficient use than bottled water for human consumption.
Mr. Mayor, I was just going to point out that the city was not asked to sign any non-disclosure agreement as part of the process to date, so.
All right. Staying online.
Carmen is next.
Hi.
Hello. Can you state your name and address, please?
I am Carmen Sherman. I live at 1314 Overlook Street in New Market. I had no questions coming into tonight, but as I listened through the Zoom, I did come up with two things that I, I'd like clarification on. The first one, when it was mentioned that the pipe that was installed out to the industrial park was put in, not just for them, that it was put in for future growth, it made me kind of shake my head. Makes sense? That's the way the town is growing. Everybody that's going to be out there is going to use that pipe. Is that pipe enough? Will that pipe support future commercial, residential, industrial growth and the continuing use or need from Niagara? Or will additional pipe need to be drawn out there? And at that point, who pays for it? The second question is, the industries that Renee, I believe, mentioned and their water usage, those numbers made me kind of shake my head too. And, yep, they use a lot of water. Did you then ask what kind of water rate that those industries are given? What percentage of the discount do they get from their residential users? Can we compare what we are offering to Niagara to what they are offering to their industrial users as well? That's all I have.
Thank you. So regarding the comparison to other cities, Renee, I believe, was just approaching that in the context of, or in the view of trying to put the Niagara usage in context with other businesses in other cities, so.
With aquifer, I understand the drawing from the aquifer. Yep, that makes sense.
So as far as water rates, we do look at the water rates of neighboring cities on an annual basis. So I think that's something that we could likely provide you. I don't know that we have it immediately at our disposal, is that?
Correct. So I think the reality is that cities don't make money on their water rates. They need to cover water rates to meet their fiduciary responsibility to make sure your cash flow stays in the black now and projected into the future. Every system is different, both from a water and a sewer standpoint, and each city's rates are based on the specifics of that community. Some communities on the wastewater side have more lift stations, which increase some of their costs and operating costs. Some cities have, require a more complex treatment system. Some cities have a great economy of scale with regards to their system. You tend to see that larger communities, unless they have some unusual circumstance, tend to have cheaper water rates because a lot of their stuff's bought and paid for, and, and they have a big economy of scale. Look at us comparable to the city of Lakeville, for example. It is fair to say that our water rates are amongst the highest in the region. There is no question about that. But they're not the highest. Our total utility bill is not the highest within, within the region, but we're in the upper third. There is no question, there's no question about that. With regards to the other communities, we did not specifically look at their water rates because I don't, it's a little bit of an apples-to-apples comparison. We looked at our water rates specific to our system, specific to our costs, specific to our revenues and what we need to run the system. And we provided with regards to an adjusted super-user rate, for lack of a better term, large industrial user rate, that was appropriate and proportionate to the efficiencies they provide on the system.
And now, with regards to the piping, Rich, is that your area you'd like to?
I can, I can weigh in, I mean, it's, it's a complex subject, but there are certainly limits to every pipe. And so as development occurs, we look for opportunities to expand our network. We've got the main spine, for example, out to I-35 and, and just beyond. As other development occurs, we'll be building secondary pipes that form networks and loops so that we can have more capacity going out. Towers can have a huge influence on that. By placing a tower in that location, it will certainly provide fire protection water for the rest of the town. But it also helps make that pressure out there more uniform so that the pipes can go further.
So if more piping is needed, who pays for it?
It's paid by the developers as it goes in.
Paid for by the development?
Yep.
By the developers, okay.
The city has a part, the city has a part, we pay oversizing, and that's why we collect trunk fees from developers as they come in, goes towards that. So in the end, all growth is paid for by development.
And I think it was fair to say that, or it is fair to say that when we put that pipe in, whenever we put it in, it's all blurred out, that we built it for growth. Or we, I mean, it wasn't a willy-nilly decision to, to pick the size. I'm sure you gave us a chart and said, this big post, this much, and this big, I mean.
It was, yeah, intended to support the opportunity for commercial and industrial growth on the east side of town.
With a super-user.
We had no idea that Niagara was even coming when this pipe was planned years ago.
Just trying to make sure that the pipe is not limited to what Niagara will need to draw.
Nope.
Because it's, that's the argument that you're giving the citizens is that the pipe is there for all.
Yep.
I don't want 10 years down the road, development to be coming in, and then you say, well, everybody's got to pay for a new pipe, and we didn't charge these people, but this is what has, has to happen now.
No, we have our network planned out years in advance, and so whenever development occurs, we keep expanding that until eventually they connect so that we have a, we have a network system instead of a trunk and branch system. And every city that's smaller when it's starting is a branch system. But as it grows and those branches get connected, you have a network, and that increases capacity dramatically. The other thing to keep in mind is the biggest reason we have big pipes instead of small pipes is for firefighting. And that is pretty, thankfully, rare. It does happen, but it also is really rare that you'd be fighting multiple fires at one time. So a big pipe can fight a fire here and another time fight a fire over there. But for the domestic use, that most places, homes, commercial, industrial, you don't need such big pipes. They're sized that way for fire protection.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Tia Smith?
Hi, Brian Smith, speaking here with Tia Smith, 9865 247th Street, Lakeville in New Market Township. We've been residents out here for about 34 years now, and we're, our back property borders against the New Market city limits. And I'm sure that at some point in time, there may be annexation and maybe inclusion there. First, I want to just say that, based on our, we were attending the meeting last Thursday, we appreciate all the research, all the work that's been at the city council, and also all the research that's been done by a lot of the citizens of New Market, New Market Township and surrounding areas. I have to admit that I haven't done the research, but certainly appreciate the thoughtfulness that's going in on, on this particular project. There's no doubt that it's obviously going to be a benefit to the people that own that land in that area. It's going to be a benefit to the developers. It's going to be a profitable enterprise for Niagara, or else they wouldn't be looking at that site. And maybe they're looking at it for the price of the land and the availability of water, maybe the cooperation and the welcoming attitude of the city council. And I can sure understand that goal and objective. Last Thursday, there was a reference to some document in the city. I'm not exactly sure what it would be, but it was talking about goals and values of the city. And I apologize that I haven't done a research as to looking at what those goals and values are. But obviously, there's probably a lot that we should be aware of as to what those values would, would represent to, not only the immediate city, but also those in the surrounding area. I have the privilege of working part-time for a school in Lakeville, an elementary school. And the principles of the school, or at least some of the values that they put forth to their students, are kind of developed in a mantra that says, we are safe, we're responsible, and we are kind. And that is intended not only to help develop behaviors within the school, but also to allow them to take them out into their homes, into the community, and I think also in sensitivity to the, the greater world or the environment that they're going to be playing a part in. During COVID, they replaced the drinking fountains in the school, and there is a counter on there that, that specifically says, bottles saved. And these kids may not be aware of the impact of using drinking fountains and using refillable bottles. But what, what kind of troubles me is that it seems like their efforts or at school systems' efforts to try and conserve and, and use sustainable or reusable products is almost laughable when you out into the world and see a company, Niagara, that's probably generating, I can't even calculate how many bottles of, of plastic to be accommodating people who are just not educated enough to know how to filter water and refill usable containers. So I think the, the greater world is just kind of playing into this convenience and not really taking a look at, are we really teaching, you know, not just our children, but adults as well? That we don't have to have the convenience of plastic bottles to satisfy our thirst. So I guess, as I kind of think about a community and the attractiveness of the community, I think sometimes that values of what that community stands for and welcomes into their area. And I think that, for me anyway, whether or not our, our property is ever brought into the city, it'd be great to drive into the city of New Market, city of Elko New Market, and see at the base of the sign, welcome to Elko New Market. We are safe, we are responsible, and we're kind, implying kind to business, kind to our residents, and kind to our environment. Thank you.
Thank you, and if you couldn't tell, you got a nice applause. So I appreciate your comments. Okay, I don't see anyone else with their hands raised online, so. And I don't believe there's anyone else that's, hasn't had an opportunity to speak, so. Please keep the comments real short. We usually don't open this up to second opportunities, so. If you can try and keep it under a minute, I appreciate, thank you.
Janelle Kujna, 26775 Grand Avenue, Elko. I just wanted to say, you talked about. I just wanted to say, you talked about the well interference and there is well interference. How that's handled on the DNR's website, am I correct? How, what well interferences are handled? Correct? And I just wanted to point out that Blaine, Minnesota, had a well interference this last year in 2021 and 2022. They turned on four wells and they dewatered 138 people. They had anticipated that, so they had a well interference plan in place. So with anticipating that you could potentially dewater some people, will you be having a well interference plan in place? And if so, will you be putting up a bond for it? Or will Niagara be financing it, or where would the money come from?
Thank you.
Can you talk about the situation in Blaine and also how we would handle well interference?
Sure. Well, the situation in Blaine is a little different because they don't have, their wells are in a different aquifer than what we're dealing with here. So it's not an apples to apples comparison. So much different there. And they would have had that well interference plan in place because of what they did with the DNR and their drawdowns and pumping through that process. That's why they developed that well interference plan. That's a process that the city would go through in prepare, in, in developing a new well, going through that DNR process of the test pumping. Through there, you did, if there is well interference, you would go through that plan with a well interference plan, or you just address the wells that were impacted. So it, it's a little different process in Blaine because of the types of aquifers that they're dealing with.
I guess my question was more about where the money is going to come from if there is well interference. Not directly comparing us apples to apples to Blaine, but the fact of the matter is, is that there could be potential that you dewater people and I would like to know where.
Janelle, could you come to the podium, please, for purposes of?
Absolutely.
I guess my, my question wasn't necessarily comparing apples to apples to Blaine. My question is, is if we dewater people, where is the money going to come from? So I'm not comparing us to Blaine. I'm saying that there, and you said last week that you don't know for sure that you won't dewater anybody and that the DNR will require some testing. And if in fact you do dewater some people, what is the plan for paying for it? That's the only reason I brought Blaine into it, not to compare us apples to apples.
Tom?
The responsibility is on the city. So if we, if we apply for appropriation permit and our testing indicates that it is having well interference, the solution to the well interference will be looked at on a well-by-well basis. And it's part, and as part of that, the DNR will require that the city address that. So as part of our process, that is out there. I think to sit here and say, no, we're going to absolutely guarantee that there is no potential of any well interference anywhere, I think it would be false. I think we've done enough work to feel that we feel that there's the capacity to be able to put wells in based on our experience and putting the four wells, five wells that we already have put in within the community and the testing and the pumping that was associated with that, but there's no absolutes. And when you find that there's well interference, you have to come up with a solution at the time. And the city will be held responsible by the Department of Natural Resources to provide a solution to addressing well interference if indeed it does occur. But to sit here and say, this is exactly the solution, exactly how it's going to happen and exactly what the amount would be, I think it's impossible for us to do at this time because it will be addressed when we get to that point in time. And as part of the process, there will have to be mitigation of those impacts and it has to be addressed.
I just want to add a point too. We did contact the DNR today just specifically about the Blaine case to see what's kind of going on. So the issue is they had a new water treatment plant with four new wells to be drilled. The DNR approved one of those wells and they ran all four anyways. So the problem was.
They basically ran wells without the appropriation permit. They didn't follow the process.
Anyone else with a quick, something quick? Thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to the city council and staff. I wouldn't take up more of your time, but I have an issue that I don't think has been addressed yet. So thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm Vita Connetz. I live at 983247th Street East in New Market Township. I want to thank you first of all for listening to our concerns this evening. I believe that you all do want to do the right thing and that you will carefully consider and assess all the evidence that you've been hearing with the best interests of the community at mind. But part of your assessment must also include preserving and protecting the Vermillion River watershed. With its 49 miles of DNR-designated trout streams, the watershed is certainly worth protecting. I've taken students there over many years and I know the value of this stream to our communities. The Vermillion River is, as you know, probably groundwater-fed. The headwaters start near my house, right out here in Elko New Market Township. I live across the street from the other people that you just spoke to via Zoom. It's cold, it's high in dissolved oxygen when that water comes up, and that's a must for a trout stream. It's very important. We do not have adequate data at this time to assess whether tripling the amount of water that is drawn from the Jordan Aquifer will negatively impact the aquifers above it or our surface waters. If Niagara bottling wishes to mine and sell the groundwater, it should first be required to do a multi-aquifer test. This test would determine if the shallow and the deeper aquifers are connected. If the aquifers are not completely confined but leaky, withdrawing large amounts of water from the deep Jordan Aquifer may impact the layer above it, which is the Prairie du Chine Jordan group and the water levels in the overlying tributaries of the Vermillion River. In Lakeville in 2017, so not that far from us folks, BJ Bonin, or Bonin, I'm sorry, I don't know how to pronounce, but a geologist with the Minnesota DNR, who spoke well of you, sir, he conducted a study to identify if there were interconnections or leakages between the water table and the underlying confined aquifers. This was completed because of the city's increased groundwater use in the watershed. The results were actually a surprise to the geologist who conducted the study. They expected no leakage, but they found there was. The aquifer test demonstrated that pumping the Jordan, the Jordan sandstone caused drawdown in the leaky Prairie du Chine group and the water table outwash aquifers and in the surface water. Drawdown in the water table outwash aquifer led to reduced groundwater flow to South Creek, a reduction of 12 cubic feet per second. The Jordan and Prairie du Chine aquifers are both leaky in this portion of Dakota County. Pumping either of these aquifers will influence surface water in Dakota County. No similar studies have been done in Scott County. So the effects of pumping three times the water from that aquifer from below Elko New Market are unknown. And the only way to determine if this will impact the Prairie du Chine aquifer and the groundwater flow to the headwaters is to conduct a multi-aquifer test, similar to the one done in 2017 by the DNR. And I strongly recommend the city require Niagara to hire a geologist to conduct this test so that we know if nearby wells that reach into these leaky aquifers will fail or reduced flow will cause the loss of our prized trout streams. I would assert that neither outcome is worth the eventual tax benefits of moving forward with this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I, I did send the study to Renee, which she can share with you. Thank you.
Good job.
Mr. Mayor, we have another Zoom participant raising their hand.
But we're, we're kind of opening it up to the people here first.
I'd just like to respond really quickly to the Vita, the last.
Real quick.
Participant, we are in regular communication with the Vermillion River Watershed District regarding this project. They are in the process of determining if they are going to provide comment. And they're also working with the Dakota County Groundwater Protection Unit to determine if they're going to provide comment as well.
Sure, you've been real patient. Come on up.
Thank you. I want to thank the council, staff, consultants, everyone that's come because this is a holiday week and there's been a lot of growing pains. I think that everyone's learning, residents, city staff, on this being the first, you know, potential user in this industrial park that we're looking at. So a lot of questions out there, a lot of growth. I just appreciate all the due diligence, the time everyone spent answering questions, the fields of emails, everything. I'm going to keep mine brief because I know I've sent out a lot of questions, you know, and asked a lot of things. But one of the things I want to talk about because of traffic engineers here, this is kind of why I brought this one up. The QuickTrip, so wonderful addition to our city, thank you. So one of the interesting questions I have is, do we expect any of the freight vehicles from Niagara to be making any fueling stops at QuickTrip? Now, I know that's a very vague question. And why I'm asking it is, would we need to consider traffic studies at the County Road 2 westbound and France southbound interchange there, interchange, intersection? Because that could potentially create queuing issues. And I don't know that that left turn lane is long enough. You know, I'm going into some hypotheticals here, but I just want to, you know, kind of throw that out there and see if this might be something that we want to consider in the future and make sure that we're doing our due diligence, you know, whether it be this venue or this partner or any other partner coming to that industrial park.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So there are two reasons why we didn't consider the QuickTrip access. One, I guess being it's over a mile and a half away from the proposed development. So that's well outside the standard boundary that we'd consider for a development of that size. And then to your first question, it would be pretty tough to estimate how many, if any, trucks would. Yeah, or all, sure, use that QuickTrip for fueling. So those are the two reasons why not. I'm sure it'll be monitored. If issues do arise, that could be relooked at, but it wasn't considered, no.
I'd also like to note or add that at least on a temporary basis, there are some supply chain issues at the QuickTrip and they will not be putting in the diesel truck fueling component of the station. At this point, they indicated in the future they will be, but we have received the building permit application and that diesel fueling component that you see at most QuickTrips, there's some supply chain issues with the tanks for that. They are going to go ahead and build without that.
Interesting.
Potentially expand in the future, hopefully.
Okay, well, that's great to know. Thank you. And then my final point is actually regarding one of the items that is really up for vote by the council. And I just want to kind of put my two cents out there because I know there's a lot of information out there, but I think we're really only voting on a few things here. And trying to compile all that into this is, is very difficult, I'm sure. But so we spent $2.9 million to run the connection and water main lines out to the park I-35 last summer, correct? So was that a bonding initiative that was put on the city books?
Yes, we issued debt for that.
Okay, thank you. So I guess I'm wondering if we're really good stewards to the city? If we go and waive $3.1 million in connection fees to any sort of user of that? Because as residents, we do pay very high water rates and that's no, I mean, we complain about it over and over again. And I know that at some point, you know, a high water user will hopefully reduce those, I get that. But if we factor the $3 million down, and if I'm doing my numbers right, it comes to about, you know, $639 per resident per year or about 19 ERUs per resident. Now, that's to me a decent number to look at. And I guess from that regards, I would, you know, strongly encourage the council to consider voting no on forgiving those connection fees. And if you want to talk more about the connection fees, I'm ready to listen, so thank you.
Thank you. We're going to keep moving on because I know we've discussed that a couple of different times here. But I'm happy to talk offline or however about that, so. Anyone else with a quick comment before we go back to Zoom? I'm looking at you because I know you.
Me?
Yeah, I thought you, like a couple of times, I wanted to get up and say something.
Well, I just have a question about the well thing. Okay. I just want to stand up. Okay, so we have three people on our well. I'm Jody. Hi, everybody.
Jody, what's your address for the record?
26501, whatever, whatever, Xerxes Trail. So I have three people on my well. So if our well fails and it's 319 feet deep, thanks Bryce, you're amazing. And if I have three pieces, do you have to like, do we all have to come in at the same time? And, or do you just go house to house and you get a well and you get a well and you don't get a well?
Sure.
Because the backside, there's no water on the backside because they're on Woodcrest.
Well, I don't think it would be reasonable that we say only you get water and your neighbor doesn't.
Well, I won't get water.
I mean.
I won't get water because on Xerxes, I have water.
Right, but if there's three people on a well, we're not going to just select one of those people to get water and tell the other two people they got to go down to the river with buckets, okay?
Well, I know I'll, you'll tell me, you know what? Yeah, well, the old engineer gave them the water. You got to put your thing and you got to pay extra.
The specific solution for those three property owners, if that instance was to occur, we would look at the specifics of it at that time and look and see what the solution is. But one property owner would not be favored and nobody would be left without water.
Yeah, okay. I'm just trying to prevent grandpa from coming back.
Understood.
Understood.
Grandma, grandma muted him. You thank him, you call grandma and say thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have one person online, Jake.
Yep, just iPhone.
Has ever got their hand raised with the iPhone?
Hey, this is Jonathan Carlson.
I'm sorry.
My address is.
The floor is yours.
This is Jonathan Carlson. I'm at 26126 Pillsbury Avenue. I have just a short question regarding traffic safety, not congestion. In the traffic study presented Thursday night, there was statistics around a crash safety index presented. And in it, it said an index above 1.0 was of concern and marked red on the map. And at the west side of the intersection of County Road 2 and 35W, it was reported that current traffic levels already have that intersection at a crash, crash safety index of 2.0. So I have a couple of follow-up questions. One, can you put that 2.0 in context? Does that make it the worst intersection in Elko, the worst intersection in Scott County? So can you kind of provide a context for that statistic? Two, can you, is there any modeling done on what that will become with the additional traffic of the park? And then third, at any level of that index, does that become a criteria for not moving forward with plant, planning more traffic for that intersection? Thanks.
Thank you.
Great questions. To the first point, I can't, I don't have an analysis citywide or countywide run, so I can't give you context to how that compares to intersections around town. But we do know it is above average statewide, as noted in that presentation. I'm sorry, what was your second question?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, sorry.
Can you hear me again?
Yep, now I can.
Yeah, the second question was, what does the modeling look like for that intersection's safety over time? We seem to be planfully putting more traffic onto an already, an intersection that seems to be twice the safe level or the area of concern.
Sure. Another great question. It's, it's difficult to model crashes in the future since they are, I guess, what we'd call random and rare. They're very up and down. One, you might, you might have five crashes, the next you might have zero. It's just very hard to predict and there's really no great way of modeling that into the future predictably. So nothing was done there. And sorry, the third question?
Would 2 be actionable for further development or something like that?
No, it's, it's just something we need to monitor. And it's, it's again, it's another reason to pressure MINDOT and say there is an issue here.
I also just want to add, I think that goes back to something that was stated last week. You know, the city has been behind the scenes and now even more so in, well, I guess in front, advocating hard for improvements on that, at that intersection or at that on and off ramp. And we're, well, we've had some good conversations with the county on different ways to address traffic at 2 and 35 as well, so more to come on that. Last call. Anybody else care to speak? All right, with that, we will close the public hearing at 7:27. Linda, go ahead.
There was questions in the other room apparently about the movie. I just wanted to let people know that I do upload the movie through YouTube.
The movie?
You can find the movies.
What movie?
The meeting.
The recording.
The media.
The recording, sorry.
The meeting recording.
Sorry. Sorry. There was uploaded to YouTube on Saturday and placed on the city's website on Monday morning. This one, due to the length of these meetings, it does take a process. I will have this one up as soon as possible. I do go through YouTube, but you can find it on the city's website under the, if you go to the homepage, you can find it under government and then click on mayor and council. And under that, you can find the city council recorded meetings. Thank you.
And movies?
And movies.
Any discussion by council? Otherwise motions?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by?
Sorry.
So we, we, this item was continued, but staff recommendation was to table this item for further consideration until after the.
I think we already did.
We did it for the land use items. We did not do it for this one because the hearing was still going. So the council took no action. So we request that the council table this item to be, and direct staff to reschedule it once.
So, so moved. Second. All in favor? Aye. Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Amanda, second by Kate. All in favor?
Nope.
Josh, what do you got?
Well, no, I, I just wanted to take a second. I mean, this has been awesome. And I know I've talked to several of you guys outside of, outside of this. But we all greatly appreciate the feedback, the comments, how even some of the comments on Facebook, whatever. You know, that's what we sign up for, that's what we are here to do. So I just want to, you know, truly thank everybody and everybody online that has suffered through these last couple of meetings and the length. This is a typical process that we go through. So if you really enjoyed this, come back every other week and you can join in this fun into perpetuity. But really, truly thank you for, for providing this feedback, these comments. You know, Joe nailed it a little bit ago too. I mean, we haven't had some of the discussion yet. So I mean, this is super helpful in framing up some of the questions that some of us may or may not have that we'll be able to ask at a future meeting. And I think it just echoes some of the same questions that we have perhaps, or I'll speak for myself, I have, that you guys have framed up in a very nice way. So please just know we greatly appreciate it, keep it going. I just hope that this continues beyond this one topic and that everybody actually cares, the decisions we make six months from now, showing you how important your voices are and how much we have, I've tried. We've tried to elicit them for a long time, so just thank you, that's all.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second. All in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.